Next item is the approval of our expenditures. We have a motion to take care of our expenditures from that.
So move then.
Steve, do we have a second? Second, move. All those in favor of approving their expenditures?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next item is their committee appointments for board consideration. The first one is highway and safety. And that is for Tim Lovelace for a two-year term to begin October 1. Do we have a motion for this appointment? Do we have a second? Second. Anyone else? Any other nominations? All those in favor of Tim?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right. Next position is with the IDA, Jared Glass, four-year term. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we reselect Jared Glass for the position of a four-year term at the Industrial Development Authority. He's representing my district, District 2. Do we have a second with that? Ors, do we have any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Nate Kaiser.
Do we have a second with that?
I'll second.
Anyone else? Any other nominations? All right, we'll do these in reverse order. All those for Nate Kaiser. One, two, three. All right, all those for Jared Glass. Mr. Glass will return for District 2, four-year. All right, we'll open the floor for citizens' comments. Is there anyone signed up for citizens' comment? All right, any folks on the floor? Any citizens commenting? Seeing none, we just close that. Constitutional officers. Seeing none. All right, next on our agenda is our county attorney reports and requests.
For an extended period of time, I'm trying to get all the details put into place. And I have reviewed the user agreement and it has already been approved by the authority, Bacchanan County and Dickson County, and I'm satisfied with the terms. Basically, what we had to do was just put in there some clarification that even though this agreement would be subject to annual review by this board, we would be, you know, they are subject to pre-existing contracts and agreements made with DQ and other entities. So I am satisfied with that language and so are all the other counties. So hopefully, we can finally resolve this. So I'd be asking the board to approve the user agreement for the Cumberland Plateau Waste Management Authority.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion that we approve the manpower and the user agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve? Discussion, discussion?
Thank you. I just need some clarification when we're talking about the manpower agreement. And we have three employees or two and a half employees. What, I just, I have a question about that because that, I keep getting that question asked back to me and I didn't know. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wallace.
So it says, it says in here, and I don't have it marked, but I read it. Do we have two and a half employees or do we have three employees?
Two point five FTEs.
Pardon me?
Two point five FTEs.
Okay. Now, does the other counties have three? Does anybody know that?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to know where we stood with employees and since we're going to be using some kind of chopping machine next time, maybe.
Each county, it's up to the county administrator in each county as to how many people that choose to put at the transfer stations. And I'm not sure how many Dickson and Bacchanan.
Okay.
Bacchanan County, I think, has, they do mighty.
Fines or waste.
Yes, yes, they do. I think they have four Dickson, I think it's two, and we have two point five.
Okay. Just need a clarification, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any further discussion? Are all those in favor of the user agreement as written?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The next item under my reports are approval of two documents for a bond for the IDA. And I see Mr. Jones is here, he doesn't want to speak to anything. And I've reviewed the documents and there's a resolution and a support agreement and I do, they are sufficient. So I would submit them for your approval.
All right, so we need a motion to approve this million-dollar IDA tax exempt bond, so.
So move. Second.
Okay, David?
Second.
And Steve? All right, any discussion?
Well, are we allowed to ask what this is? I don't mean to be silly, but I'm going to have somebody ask me when I walk out of here, when I vote on it.
The IDA was doing some improvement modifications for the office that the Sheriff's Department has been and another bill, if I'm completely correct on that. We, in anticipation of this. I'm sorry, Ors, try to speak up loud. This bond is for the improvements that are being made to offices that are being used by the Sheriff's Department and another agency. And the, I think the total cost of those improvements is approximately $1 million. The IDA, a couple of months ago, and we've been discussing this financing for quite some time, and they, First Bank loaned them $500,000 as an interim financing so they could get on with the work back in midsummer or late summer. So I think part of that project is already complete. What this $1 million tax exempt bond does is it refinances the initial $500,000 that First Bank loaned the IDA, as well as the additional money that's needed to complete that project. The Industrial Development Authority passed the resolution authorizing this loan on September the 10th. If you'd like to have a copy of that resolution, I have it, and this is just finalizing that transaction.
So it is for the sheriff's office and the renovations that's going on in this building, correct?
I believe that's correct, ma'am.
Any other comments, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion by David, second of Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
The last thing that I have, Madam Chair, is a revision to our revenue sharing agreement regarding Project Crow. And we had previously approved this to reflect the revenue sharing agreement with the Tobacco Commission. After we approved that agreement, it's my understanding Pazwill did meet, and they added one word to be, for clarification, to the revenue sharing agreement. They simply added that when we're defining that, when we're stating also 5% of the tax revenues shall be deducted from gross project revenue, that it was the project tax revenues because that's the way it's defined. And so that's how Pazwill approved it. And I had spoken with their attorney and also the attorney for Bacchanan County and said that I did not object to making that one small revision. So I'm asking you all to approve that agreement with that one revision about any more tax than that.
So you have a copy of that?
I do, I do have, I brought a copy of what I had changed it to be. And I saw that it was not attached to your agenda, but it's in the, when it discusses project revenues, under net project revenue, you had to add that provision. And I had written also 5% of the project or the tax revenues shall be deducted from gross project revenue to be provided to the Tobacco Regional Revitalization Commission and pursuant to the revenue sharing agreement. And he simply added in there and made it net project tax revenue because that's the way it read, it reads in the above definition.
So Katie, we've already passed this, is this?
Yeah.
It's just so that we all have the same agreement because that's the way Pazwill approved it, and I didn't have a problem with that modification. I'm the one that drafted the language and we met before they did and they added that and I didn't have a problem.
Based on attorney's approval of this document, I'll make a motion we go ahead and pass.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve? Any further discussion? All in favor of just the rewording of this motion?
Aye.
I should say this resolution, this revenue sharing agreement.
I know we're already in the process of voting, but will we see a document, Katie, on this because we're just, I mean, I don't have anything before me and I think that's fine. I'm comfortable, if you're comfortable, you're a guardian.
Yes, yes, if we can get all of the signatures. And I did not verify with Mr. Moise. My understanding was Bacchanan County was going to make this one too because we spoke about that. We, I guess if the last meeting, we weren't aware that Pazwill had approved the agreement that I had sent with a small change. So they're going to do that too. So when we can get all the signatures, I can forward that all to all of the board members. We had all previously passed adding, we had previously passed the revenue sharing agreement back in, we marched this year, and then we had to change it due to the Tobacco, the Tobacco Commission Revenue Sharing Agreement that they sent. And so, just so we can all, all three counties would have the same exact agreement is why I'm asking you to make this modification. But we had all approved adding that addition to reflecting that 5% has to be paid back to the tobacco commission. So the only difference was they had an additional word that we didn't have. That's all for me, Madam Chair.
Officer Stowe, county administrator reports and requests, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports and requests is the, of course, the Russell County Cares Fund financial summary. And on this summary is, of course, this is the Cares Fund that came down from the federal government through the state to assist us during the pandemic. These are a summary of the financials that we expended, but I'd like to hit up on some, you know, some highlights, especially with this program and the things that we've been able to assist the community with. First of all, we have transferred over $800,000 to the towns to be able to help local businesses and their infrastructure. Also, in addition, we have, as far as the public facilities, we have expended on emergency and PPE and decontamination equipment, safety modifications to the buildings of over $300,000. Another high point is we have also contributed over $110,000 to food pantries to be able to serve Russell County residents during this time of need. Also, another high point in our first responders, ones that we don't need to forget, on our fire and rescue, out between the five rescue squads and eight fire departments, we have to date contributed over $415,000 to, to be able to assist them, to be able to get their PPE gear, get what they needed to respond to Russell County citizens in a time of a matter. Tim Edsie, he is the actually Virginia Department Emergency Management Regional Director, and he made the comment about Russell County, this was only two of counties out of his 19 that was working so closely with our emergency management. Mr. Carl Ray and the squads and the fire departments to be able to, and of course, Jess Powers with our FEMA. We are attacking this from all ends, but he made the comment that Russell County citizens are well-served. So, and next on the balance is right now, to date, as of 10-1 of 2020, we have 1.54 million remain, which I'll be asking here in a few minutes about more business grants. So of course, that is one of the important things within the community. Next on the county administrator reports is.
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Just I hate to interrupt you, just to stay on task with this one. I had asked.
Yes. I have. Yes. Well, what happened when this first came down and we get a flurry of guidelines every, about every two weeks on what is eligible? And the federal government, they put these guidelines in place based off of CDC, FEMA, WHO, NIH, you know, agencies of what is eligible, what is not eligible. When it first started out, as far as uniforms for the fire departments, because the fire departments don't answer as many calls as an ambulance does, their turnout gear, when they used it, was responding to, of course, fires, automobile wrecks and assisted lifts. So that they had certain pieces of equipment on their turnout gear, like the face shields that were classified PPE, gloves and stuff like that. Since then, they have somewhat relaxed the rules and we're working right now with the squads. They are, they're classifying maybe the jackets and the pants, but not the boots because you're supposed to be wearing covers and somewhat hazmat, you know, suits if it gets into that difficult, but you can't wear those during a accident or fire. So they're looking, looking at possibility of jackets and pants.
Okay.
And we'll get back with the squad.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir. Next on county administrator reports is, of course, the Russell County Learning Center Pilot Program that's occurring up here next door. This was a partnership with the Russell County Board of Supervisors, Russell County School Board, United Way, and the Southwest Virginia Workforce Development Board for a learning center for children, for parents during school times. When this initiative first started out, and Tim can elaborate on it a little bit more, we, the K through 3 had not began school back, so we were anticipating maybe 60 to 70 students. Since then, the K through 3 has returned to school and we, right now, and I'll be providing y'all the numbers of, we're into the mid-30s, providing teacher assistance on their days off, days on. So that's where we're currently on the learning center, so. He did.
Steve, they had 36 families reply and that impacted 46 children. And, let's see, he had five from the Casswood area and 31 wanted to be in Lebanon area. That was the, his application, that's what he. No, none from Holacre, Sorchew-Givens area. And apparently, what he was telling me, because I called and asked him for clarification, is a lot of the parents either worked in Lebanon or they worked on in Abingdon and they dropped their children. He, no one from Dank replied, no one from Cleveland replied, and apparently that seemed to be what the parents needed is because of their work. This was a central location that they dropped them off, or the grandparents lived here and then when they, grandparents could come pick them up at the end of the school, all the parents were still working in Abingdon. But that's the conversation we kind of had.
Well, a lot of my constituents, you know, they, I've talked to them, they work in Richland, Bacchanan County, and they cannot drive their children over here and then have the time to be able to come back and pick them up. That's the reason I felt like that an opportunity like this would more be fitted in our local districts for the convenience of it because of the working families. But I heard there was only two, they had two today, two in attendance today, you know, but I would like to see if this would work, if it would work for everybody in everybody's district more fluently.
That's why I was thinking about Brown, you know, in that district like that.
Right, that's a good idea.
I think one of the things that's been passed to these children, K through 3, get to go back four days a week, and your special needs children get to go four days a week, and that's, that's helped parents.
Right.
And that's, you know, they need to be inspired by those.
That's our deal. Four days a week.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Wednesday, 10th Christmas, Wednesday the day that.
Wednesday is, yes.
All the.
No students are, no students are 10 on Wednesday. Teachers work.
Teachers work.
Any more questions? Comment? Nick?
No.
No. Right. And we can put that in for consideration. Right now, as far as the funding for it, it's based off of what students they have. It's prorated, it's not for the whole 60 that they have rejected or 70. It's based off of 30, and Dr. Brown, it's a reimbursement thing. Next on the county administrator, this is for the request. As everyone can see, I had one of my screens up, these are businesses and towns that we have give to during this time. You know, the IDA, they had initially had 10 loans that we converted to grants for 10 businesses. Another 14 applications that the Russell County Board of Supervisors had approved for a total of $60,000. Again, we contributed to the fire and rescue squads of over $415,000, $110,000 to the Food Ministries. The Town of Lebanon, which was the pass-through on how they've used their money into their businesses, also with the Town of Holacre, how they have passed in through their businesses within their boundaries and within the towns to be able to assist businesses. And tonight, as before the Board of Supervisors, we right now have 25 applications, well, a total of 25, 35, 38 applications, that's before the Board of Supervisors, additional businesses to be able to approve. And this is the list that you see up on the screen here, and that's in your packet, that's highlighted as pending grants. These are the 25 applications for a total of $125,000 plus an additional farm set listed for 13 applications, which is $65,000. I need a motion for approval based off of the eligibility of the, per the guidelines of the Cares Applications and Grants for the approval of the 25 business applications and the 13. and the thirteen farm applications.
Any discussion? And this is contingent upon being, everything followed through with their tax forms, IDs, their deals being paid, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Next up on the county administrative request is, of course, the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. This is between the IDA, the Industrial Development Authority of Russell County and Polycapt, uh, and the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority, VDP. The locality has been awarded a grant of and expects to receive a hundred thirty thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund through the VDP for the purpose of inducing the company to purchase equipment, improve and operate a manufactured facility within the county, hereby making a significant capital investment and creating and maintaining a significant number of jobs through these, through these. I need a motion for approval for the one hundred and thirty thousand that's eligible through the VDP grant. No motion. Second.
Carl, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting this money of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Anyone opposed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next on the county administrative reports and requests is a resolution of support. This is the closing of Route six oh one for a landslide and repairs. I have put a copy of the, uh, the location in a second. This is a detour for a landslide repair on Route six oh one, which is Hurricane Fourth Road in Russell County. The Virginia Department of Transportation has deemed it necessary to close the portion of the Route six oh one in Russell County for repair of the landslide. And the Russell County Board Supervisor hereby concurs with the Virginia Department of Transportation decision to close the route from six oh one to Route six twenty one to Route six twenty five to through traffic from October the sixth, which is tomorrow, until repair of the landslide is complete. I need a motion for support of the resolution support closing of Route six oh one for landslide repairs.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Steve, any discussion?
Uh, I got a question here. On that alternative route for like emergency vehicles and stuff like that, if they need to get somebody in there. Do they have a plan in place? I didn't see.
That, that, that's get through the actual car, uh, Mr. Ray's department for, through Emergency Operations Management. Yes, that's on any closure that we have, yes, sir.
Carl made a motion, I, I can't hear.
Yes.
I feel like I'm a football player.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of this repair, this closure? Anyone opposed?
Next on the county administrative, uh, request is a resolution of support for a single lane bridge. Uh, this is a V dot project on Route six eighty seven, uh, over the Dank Road. The Virginia Department of Transportation will replace the existing single lane bridge on Route six eighty seven, which is Roanoke Hill Road. The Virginia Department of Transportation intends to replace the existing single lane bridge with another single lane bridge. And therefore, it'd be resolved that the board hereby concurs with and supports the Virginia Department of Transportation's design of a single lane bridge to replace the existing single lane bridge on Route six eighty seven Roanoke Hill Road. Uh, the reason this is a single route bridge is due to the span over Dank Road. Uh, they, if, on some of the specs and designs on it, they're trying to, to increase it for some walking, pedestrian walking on the sides. So they're looking through the designs to be able to accommodate that on Roanoke Hill. I need a motion for support of the resolution for a single lane bridge on Route six eighty seven Roanoke Hill Road.
Madam Chair, I offer a motion for a resolution of support for the Dank, um, bridge, Roanoke Hill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, any discussion? Um, I also would like to clarify now, Lonzo, so it's going to be wider than what it is now to accommodate for walking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
If conception, if their design can keep the weight and, and the replacement load down, they're wanting to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
I even asked for a bike, but they said I was stretching it, but.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the county administrative reports and requests, this is the, uh, this is a letter resignation from Crystal White for the Russell County Planning Commission. I asked the board to table this, if you don't care. Uh, she had contacted my office this afternoon to be able to see if she can now accommodate this. Due to her schedule changes and some conversations, so if you don't care, I ask you to table this until the next meeting.
Make a motion, we have a motion to table this. No move, Madam Chair. Lou, we have a second?
Second.
Tim, all right, any further discussion? I do know that Kirby said he was going to try to be here tonight to discuss this.
He was supposed to be, yes, ma'am.
All right, all right, all those in favor of tabling this? Anyone opposed?
I have a question on that. We've got these surveyors, got these flags that need to be signed off on. They going to still have to be put on hold until you see the made about them?
Right now, I've got three on my desk right now.
Two of Richard Bell is on.
No, one.
He told me we, we can have, we have a couple.
The, I think those have already been passed to the planning commission, yes.
At the last.
Yes, Crystal kept it up until the day that she did her resignation. There, I currently have three and one of the three is one of the projects that we are looking at and talking about tonight. But the other two is a residential and one is a farm. I got three. Yes, yeah, we'll talk to Kirby about that. Yes, yes, sir. Ma'am, that concludes county ministry.
No, you got number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
One more.
Yes. I was just trying to get through it. Next is, of course, the Board Supervisors, and we have been looking at, of course, with the pandemic, everyone knows with the Cares Act et cetera, that we've been giving to the community. Tim, Mr. Lovelace asked that if we look at the possibility for, uh, for discretionary community funds. So, uh, as far as the cares is restricted to what we can spend it on, we, we can make the building safe. We can do the PPE for the community centers and the biofields. But that's as, by as far as we can take at that funding. We got to still stay within compliance no matter what type of facilities, whether it's the government center or a community center or biofield or the courthouse. So we, we can't utilize that money to help out in any other way than this. And Ms. Lovelace asked if, if the possibility, if y'all could, y'all would, during the last meeting, if, for the distribution, given each Board of Supervisors a separate amount of funds to be able to contribute to in, within their district, to be able to assist other businesses or nonprofits. That, that doesn't meet the scope of what we have either appropriated to awards under the Cares Act. So this, as it states, is a discretionary community fund. It will be given to the board members to use within their district for certain projects that do not meet any other eligibility under the programs. So, uh, again, I'd leave it at the board's discretion on, uh, what to do. Of course, there's, there's a lot of needs out there right now. Yes, sir, it will have to come out of the general funds. And it, it's, it's Tim and, and.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the discretionary funds in the amount of five thousand dollars per supervisor. Mark Mitchell used to ask that same question.
Every, every, at large, always asks that they get a bigger share. You just got to spread yours across the bigger.
So we have a motion by Tim, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Of course, I can't pick this, and Carl, and Carl. All right, any discussion?
What's the budget committee saying, we have the money to do it?
Lonzo, who do?
Right now, currently in, uh, as far as our collection and as far as what we have projected, we're, we're on track. We're doing it at least a little bit better. Right now, if I look at the total budget, the thirty five thousand that y'all want to contribute to, that would not been able to assist in any other manners or, or any other funds. This would not be in the material impact to the overall county budget. So therefore, it would be good utilizations within your own districts.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, and now, Katie, does, does Steve need to read your.
Are we ready to do that?
Yes, I, I think.
We good, Ernie?
Well, there might be things that we need to discuss.
I didn't know how many, how long these people.
Sorry, you never know.
I've only got two items.
You, you can, it's just you need to amend the agenda to move that back up.
I see we.
I mean, you can amend the, you can amend the agendas, because you, you know, if there, if there's any specific action items that you take coming out of executive session, you'll probably amend the agenda to add them.
Okay, once it come out, then maybe.
Yeah, you can do a thing.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Steve, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session and discuss legal matters pursuant to section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A five, reference to Project Brown.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We'll go back into executive session.